Good evening, calling the school committee to order. Again, welcome. Thank you for coming early for the picture for the yearbook. I'm going to take care of that and make that adjustment. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
So moved in second. Done.
I have a comment.
Okay, comment, what was it saying?
The votes need to be looked at because they don't add up right, I don't think. We got 12.9 and then 12.94. I don't see how we can have a 12.94, a 12.94 and a 12.90.
It was the weight, it was the weight of deducting Mr. Deschamps when he abstained. It was the, he had abstained and then Peggy had abstained. I did go back and double check it, I'll be happy to look at it again now.
If you say it's right, then that's fine. It's just I see 12.94, 12.94, 12.90.
I questioned it myself. Because I thought it looked funny, too.
We'll confirm that.
Yep, I will double check it.
Good, good eyes. Anything else in our minutes? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Instead of going, we'll come back to item three. I mean, the superintendent of schools. If the committee does not mind, I'd like to go to the student advisory council. We have a couple of reports, I think, that's going to be pretty good to hear. Then I'll do the teacher advisory, no, then I'll go back to the superintendents. Then I'll go back on the agenda. There are three things that I wanted to highlight. One, Dr. Allen, again, was involved with Arati, picked up on something that wanted to bring to our attention, and I think if there's no objection, I think that would be a very good thing. And I also wanted just to follow up. We also have Cooper. We'll land in here, and as a follow-up, as a graduate, to kind of follow up, Lee asked for that under that piece, and again, that would be, I think, a reasonable ask. So hearing no objections. I'd like to turn it over to the student advisory council.
So we had our May 6 changing minutes ceremony last Friday, and the pamphlets with all the information on it, with all the changes, proposals outside. There's a poem on the back, "The Naval Officer" by John Paul Jones. And Dr. Allen just arrived and asked me to read it outside the room. Folks, thanks.
Absolutely.
Is by no means enough that officer of the Navy to be capable of merit. He must be that force, but also a great deal of courage. He should be as well a gentleman of liberal education, refined manners, punctualist currency, and nice sense of personal honor. He should be the soul of tact, patience, justice, purpose, and charity. No merit always had the support and subordinate to escape detention or be left to pass without its reward, even if reward is only a word of approval. Conversely, he should not be blind to a single quote of any support, though at the time he should be quick, unfeeling, extinguished, ever come out thoughtless from income. And well- meant shortcoming from headless or stupid blunder. And one word every commander should keep constantly before him, the great truth, that to be well obeyed but perfectly esteemed.
Thank you. So that happened, what night, or was it banquet?
It was last Friday.
Last Friday.
On May 6 during school hours.
Great. Anything else in the report on the student council as school is winding down?
There, I noticed there are more than ninety people volunteering for the special events that's taking place tomorrow, and that is all I have to say.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Are you not, almost, I think it's okay. Any follow-up with school committee members?
I just have a question. I started signing on the way, and I don't know if you know this, but does the capstone project, is there water data? Do you know anything?
I, you know, there is.
Is there water, what that might be?
That's on Saturday morning. That's the group that takes all the perspectives, are working together on a group project to raise money for clean water in several countries. Natural gas connected, we're doing different activities Saturday morning to support that.
I got a question. Are you a senior?
I am, sir.
What are your plans?
I leave for basic training for the United States Navy on July 13, and I'll become a machine screen, so I'm basically part of the ownership, sir.
That's good.
Thanks, sir. Good luck.
How long of a sign-up?
How long is basic training, sir?
How long is, do you have to sign up for, two years, three years?
It's four years.
It's a four years?
Yes.
And where would you be going at first?
I don't find out where my first destination is until after my, my A school, my next school, and why they're having my job. And that follows up after they release basic training down, or update regulations.
Ah, well, I know you'll do us proud. I appreciate your air bringing us the information about the schooling and what's going on. And again, you brought, Dr. Allen earlier brought the flag piece to us. That was very good about the poem on that piece, that had a lot of connection along from the, it was wonderful. And then this is also, well, I'd like to get a copy of that. I know we probably were given, I know we had an invitation, I know I wasn't able to attend, but we will get a copy of that following as well.
Can I ask one more question?
Yep, and then Dr. Allen.
Did your parents teach you to say yes, sir, no, sir, or did the commander?
The commander did, sir. And my parents did, of course.
They did a good job.
Dr. Allen?
Yes. This is an example of the way the kids behave, courtesy, their professional. This was often circumstance changing of the command, that sort of thing. It was great days, there I was there, great suit, Sheila, Keanan. And one thing I noted through a hundred and seventy, about thirty-seven, something in the order of thirty-five percent, that academic excellence of some sort can improve. But you know that they had that most, was fit listed out, and I thought that that was commendable.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you, sir. So we won't see you at June meeting, will we? You'll be, you'll be done. If you want to bring somebody in your place, we'll accept. Okay. Thank you. A follow-up, and thank you for quick adjustment on this. Lee, you wanted to bring a post grad back and have a conversation with us. I know we'll get a piece about Washington as well, but you want to turn it over to Lee?
I just wanted to, Cooper, I told you, he was unable to take part when Jason Keanan told us that they had done a survey of post-grad, et cetera. I spoke to Cooper, and he said, you guys have a problem, and I was like, that, we had some thoughts, and he had some, you know, you presented this to me a few years when I just come in and, yeah.
Come on up.
He's even got a haircut. Hopefully he'll overcome his image.
So first off, I think probably, remember where Cooper went to school?
WPI.
WPI. And what was your major? What is your major?
Robotics engineering.
Robotics engineering. How was you, I'll turn it over to you in a second, I promise, and I'll stop talking, I promise. How was your year, first year in college?
I enjoyed it. I must say.
Turn it over to you.
All right. Hello. It's been, it's hard to believe, it's been pretty much a year since I last came here. And I also like to apologize, I'm kind of sick, so my throat's a bit bothered, but I'll try my best to, um, see. I'm just here to talk about my general experience, I guess, and open to questions, just how I would, or how I continue my quav, follow up based on what I've heard from students and teachers and other things. I guess I'll start with my depth of experience.
Okay.
I thought that going into it, it was difficult. That's the first thing I'd like to make clear. It was very hard, it was a hard academic year for me, definitely. But I think of that, I personally had the experience to be able to make it through it. I did fairly well maintain a run of, and I finished a run of three point six D P I, so I'm fairly happy with that. I, in terms of Quavon's, Quavon's ability to prepare me for this, I feel that personally I have, I was prepared. It was some of the areas where I did lock a bit of knowledge in, but I kind of had to delve the doors just a bit deeper, I guess, but I think that I had enough experience going into that year. Some specific, probably the easiest section to see that I faulted it was just, it wasn't as much as an academic, just as a general mechanical computer knowledge. I feel that, as shown by our lack of, no real classes to talk about this, I didn't have any real experience between the hardware and the maintenance of computers. I knew how the general use of them throughout, throughout the web, web design and programming and such, but I feel like I had very little knowledge towards it. And although I know a lot of college students pursue that more as a hobby, I feel that Quavon could offer some, even just starter courses in this area.
In maintenance and hardware?
Yes, and just, I guess the general technology aspect. We did have classes I went through, such as web design and computer programming, but I still felt that in the general technology aspect, I wasn't as developed as I had hoped as I would have hoped. In terms of areas that were fairly helpful, I took two, or I took two calculus classes my first semester and two physics classes to each, one in each in my first two quarters. And I thought that through my AP calculus, AP physics experience, I was prepared for those. They were very difficult classes, but I do think that I had the information prepared for that. Even though the, I went to the calculus with just, there are two AP calculus classes, AP and DC. I took AP and that got me through, I think, what would have been the normal first half of WPI calculus, although DC is largely helps the greater half. And I don't know, I didn't really look into movies, it didn't interest me at the time, but I would, if there are other students pursuing a similar field, I would recommend them checking it out. I don't know if Quavon offers AP help, because I know it's a very intense and very difficult AP class.
Sheila, do we?
We have not up until this point.
That's, that's good to hear, okay.
My AP physics experience was helpful. I, for the two classes, they have Newtonian mechanics as the first one, and then electricity and magnetism. I felt that my AP physics experience was enough to be able to get me through those, even through the harder portions. I, you had two options, a non-cathartic-based approach and a cathartic-based approach, and I selected cathartic-based approach for both of them. And they were two of my hardest classes at WPI, definitely, but I feel that I was prepared to go through those. I think that, although I'm not providing you a ton of depth, Quavon provided me a good, just general feel of what I needed to learn more in the field I'm taking. As a robotics engineering major, I kind of take parts from the mechanical aspects, electrical aspect, and the computer science aspects. Although we use different languages from what I learned here at Quavon, I think that my computer science classes were very helpful, and just giving the general feels for programming. The only real, I had some electrical experience, experience in my robotics electives I took here, but I feel that physics also helped a lot for this, but the electrical and computer engineering intro class I took at WPI was taught very well, so I think that's how I got through there, even though I didn't have a ton of experience here at Quavon. I haven't taken any direct mechanical classes yet, but I also do feel prepared for that. So based on my experiences at WPI, I felt that I had been prepared personally from my experiences and the classes that I chose to take for this. I'm not sure if other people would have been also prepared enough, because WPI is a very progressive program, and we did send a decent amount of people to it, but those were at least the top ten percent of our class, I think. But I do feel it was, our advanced level programming, especially our AP classes, was essential for that, or presentation, and for my delve in WPI. And that's something else I wanted to cover on, there's a higher level of AP and IB classes. I do have something to say about that. But AP classes, I feel, presents a very adequate challenge for the students at Quavon. I do not think that they were too hard, I guess, from what I take, but some others may have disagreed with me, and this might just be based on my performance in my three AP classes, but I thought that they were very manageable, and I would like, I stress this before, I also want to do again, I want to create that level of manageability to the teachers.
Right.
I think that without these specific teachers at Quavon, I would not have been able to go to the ideal level of success I feel that I maintain.
Fantastic.
And I just, they've really helped me through everything. They've become just, even I would say, close friends of mine, just helping me out through things, and I really enjoy their presence.
Oh, that's personalization, mentorship, and I'm glad that we have that perspective. That is not just what I write down, you tell me it back, but there's a personalization and a connection to learning.
Now, I did want to talk about the IB program, because as always, it has been kind of just a question of it between the students and the faculty. It's usually the most, it's probably the most debated topic at Quavon, from what I still understand, from what I hear from my friends and the teachers. And I know that a lot of people have different opinions on this, and although I personally did not delve much into it for other reasons, I feel that, I think that we have gone too far into IB and too fast at the time, because over the course of just throughout the summer, from what school years have passed, from high sophomore years to my junior year, we changed around into almost the entire schooling system in favor of IB, completely changing the semesters and the trimesters, and bringing all these new classes for people to reach through to the diploma. And I think that, I do not think that IB is a bad idea. I think it's a very good program. But I, I also think that we went, I do think we went too far into it, namely in the sense of the diploma. I know it's a, the IB diploma and the fact that as a school we offer the IB diploma is a very powerful aspect for the school to save, for the students to save, but I think that, based on, from what I've heard recently, the students and from what I'm understanding about any budget issues you're having, I do think that the diploma, it might be too far in advance and too far at the time. So I think that going into the future, Quavon should offer the exact diploma program, but instead just offer IB courses in the way they offer AP. Because I feel that, personally, I do feel that the AP classes are very helpful and very powerful from what they teach, based on the college perspective of learning. But, and I think that the IB classes can be the same way, but based on general past experiences and, again, the budget issues, I think that AP is stronger at this point within Quavon as opposed to the IB. So it's looking.
When you went through the program the past couple of years, did you take some IB courses, too?
I took, I only managed to be able to take one IB class, a standard level, a standard level class, but I also had a lot of friends go through that. Some of my, one of, some of my really close friends, or my closest friend, went through the diploma, was very close to me, and he talked a lot about his experience through that.
Gotcha.
But just from what I've heard from students and other teachers, this is just, this is my opinion shape by what I've heard of others. I feel that, I don't think the program is bad, but I still do think that we might, or Quavon might be too, might have gone too far, and that's how I would view it. Because I feel that, although they teach the same general, or AP and IDs kind of teach the same general style of that advanced level of learning, I feel that AP has been more successful and it's given, or shown experiences through that, of the credit in things, very credit, such very through those classes.
Right. See, part of, part of our work as a school committee, and over time, we tried to do that, we tried to make sure that we had the trimesters, we were taking the opportunities for more electives of students, because the student body said they needed it, the teachers and the faculty, or our administration said there's ways to do it. That wasn't the driving force strictly for trimesters. However, I will agree with you that AP and IB can live together, it's the question of how you implement it, and how, how you communicate it, and allow students to go in and out, or, you know, be able to push themselves. So you're right, we have folks that will, the phrase that we have to work under is called college career ready. We are bound by that as a committee. Decisions are made by that, by college and career ready. The superintendent is evaluated that way. Our monies are driven that way, because if we don't, that's the, the perspective for our citizen, citizenry, that we have a basic understanding as they leave high school, that they can be ready for the workforce, and as you said, now, for you, for your first year as going into college. You mentioned about the technical skills, and I appreciated that. And you mentioned the, some of the adaptive, about how you had the support, the mentorship of teachers. And so that, to me, is very, very important, too, that we look at the whole. Our job is to help all children to be able to move forward. So even though you're right, there's AP, IB, should we, should we not, you know, but at the same time, we as a committee, and I think this committee's, and Dr. Allen's been here a lot longer than I have, forty years, we have made sure that there are programs for success for kids, regardless of one's abilities, learning differences, or styles. And that's why I'm glad that we heard about the trimesters, how we did. Again, we're not in the administration piece, we're the kind of the policy people, but it's nice to hear that maybe we kind of moved kind of fast, it took some time with it, and then we make adjustments. Would you agree to make adjustments in any type of AP or IB?
Yes.
Thank you. So that's like the work I was saying earlier, we're pioneers, and truly, and we put a program in here, and we want to give it a try, we go in a little bit and say, okay, whoops, did we go in the water a little too fast? Okay, did we communicate this effectively? Whoops, did we? Do we want more? And then without the student input, and without the faculty input, it's not going to work. So that's why it's, it's a team that makes it work. So I, I do appreciate that, and I, any other, now, any questions from my colleagues in regards to Cooper for preparedness for first year out, coming back and coming back to us, to talk to us after one year, which I know I'd have a heck of a time one year at WPI with those courses, I don't know if I could make it.
Point out his first day, there's a, there's a, there's a, talk about difference. As soon as he was in, he was two of the mates, I mean, they're setting up their whole computer systems, his, you know, he bought a whole laptop, blah, 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 like the stock, and what's his, was fairly puberty compared to what his roommates had. That was number one. Number two, is they had to plug into what, the ethernet?
Ethernet.
Ethernet. And they had a student, a sophomore, a junior, who'd been at WPI a couple of years, was roaming the corridors, and he was available, he didn't wear any, any sort of suit, everybody knew, he was available to come in and help you out, of course. We're the ones who had the trouble plugging in. His roommates were throwing out all these ideas, try this, try that, and that's when I was kind of taking the back, because they were just boom, boom, and one's from New Jersey, the other was from, uh, paint, math. And so they're, try this, how about try that, would you plug this, if you could do this? And my head's spinning, of course, I'm, I'm that person, but, and so the worker bee came in, and he couldn't do what needed to be done, so then we had a reference point to go to someplace in the library, one of the libraries or something, I mean, so the whole thing, and I'm thinking of what we were in there, it's like, okay, get, get in line at eight thirty, because you start getting these things, oh, thirty people in your class, too bad, go find another line. And everybody here was just plugged in, and I'm thinking, boy, you know, I mean, he's not a neophyte, it appears, and he took, you know, Mr. Z's classes, and did well in them, but I felt that he, from what I saw, he was kind of behind, at least troubleshooting, nothing else. I don't, I don't know if that's something we can teach, or something, some kids pick up, but at the end of the first day, I mean, my head was kind of spinning, and we took a couple of days, we were texting, we could get this fixed, we were able to plug in, blah, 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 blah. So it just did seem that he was not as prepared on technology, technological.
I would just say also that Cambridge spends $24,000 per pupil, and we spend about twelve. There are different levels.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I can.
In fairness.
Yes. No, and that's, I'm, but you also echoed, I mean, you said something that I think echoed for all of us. You talked about the mentorship, the relationships with, with faculty and staff. So that is so important, that it is a team and a community that you came from. So thank you for coming back, telling us this. That was part, Dr. Allen?
Yeah, I think one of the more important things is that you were prepared here, and you weren't prepared there, and so forth, but you knew what to do, you knew how to make connections, you knew how to go find them. And ultimately, you're not going to know everything to need development, but you need to know how to research, how to go.
Inquiry.
Yeah, yeah. All that sort of stuff. And I think in many ways, we know that you're an inquiry fellow, you spoke to us many times, and that was quite clear, but I think that that ultimately was one of the strongest things in my mind that you brought to your experience.
Anybody else? Yep, Mark?
I, I, sorry. Ten years ago, I, 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 you know, this is a lot, you know, the only school, I didn't assume a way, that year, my, my daughter, I, she could get a job, like, four years old, like, this college art school, Ivy League school, the only one, I, 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 I enjoy back going there.
But she got a job.
But the bottom line is, I was the only one that gave me the feeling that they had it on the, this is ten years ago, and I felt sincerely that, walk out of here, you'll be the guy. And, uh, he, boy.
It was.
Two thousand, two thousand.
Two thousand and five, she graduated, yeah.
But it's just, so you're in a really good school, and you've got a lot of connections, and it sounds like you're able to access.
However, your daughter is doing, I would say, quite well.
No, no, I mean, she had a great, a lot of experience.
Well, no, but I, I didn't mean that. I meant, even though she didn't go to WPI, she certainly is top of a, a very important profession.
Which school? The Bates. Initially, she went to school, initially she went to, worked a while at Southern Kennedy, and then she went to, uh, everything at Harvard, and then she went back to East and other, but, I mean, but the only, the only shortcoming she had ten years ago was, you know, I wasn't taught to write it, because basics, like, like, four, four and fifty page paper, and it was like, yeah, give me a break, you know? But that was, that was, you can choose a writer anyway, but that was the only thing that shortcoming you should have, uh, here is.
How's the writing piece over there?
I'm not sure. I haven't taken.
Because you're, now, you're doing more analysis than mathematics, right?
Well, currently, the, the, what I was going to add is had to do was for a lab report for business, and those weren't even major writing, yes. I haven't had any major writing classes yet.
You sign, are you signed up?
Yes, I do have a writing upside fifteen years ago.
Cooper, last time, I saw that you faced, you mentioned, there's a group on the crew team, I heard that the wing lids, face came in first, being WPI by Saturday.
Ah. The crew team?
Eighteen, all of them.
Bates. Cooper, thank you very much. Um, thank you for being, you know, maybe the allergies or signals, whatever. Thank you for coming and telling us. Appreciate it.
Not me.
Again, I think, you know, we, we did agree that we want to hear from students as they graduate and bring that, and that's a good thing because it's going to help us in our policymaking decisions as well, as we make those adaptations and changes with curriculum and non-curriculum, but potential programming. Good to hear. Back on the agenda, superintendent of schools.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have a, a, a little lengthier report than I usually do. Um, and obviously, we're going to talk a little bit about survey information, teacher survey, um, some of the stuff that we've been working on together relative to that document, as well as I sent to all of you the, a document regarding a more specific kind of look, you know, shall we say, uh, what do I want to say? Overview look at IB and some of the concerns that faculty have, and I shared that with you. We tried to do a, a survey that was very open-ended, providing opportunities for anecdotal comment, as lengthy as they wanted, positive, negative, whatever. Uh, and so you have that information. And we know that it was a lot of information. We used to want to plop it at your seat tonight and say, oh, I hope you've had a chance to look at that, um, in the next five minutes. So we hope that we will just give a very cursory review of what we're working on with the, um, association and, um, uh, hope that we will be able to continue this discussion on, um, June ninth, when we hope to, um, move forward with some sort of recommendation regarding, um, the transition and future of, um, international baccalaureate at the high school and AP, uh, programming and, you know, how we would like to, um, uh, work together to do that. So there's just, okay, four slides. Four. So this guy. Okay, twenty-seven-five in Cambridge per pupil.
Twenty-seven-five.
Twenty-seven thousand five. And this is, you know, equal opportunity education in Massachusetts.
And we're thirteen.
And we're thirteen.
Twenty-seven-five.
No, because when you talk about robotics and technology and hardware, it is so expensive to get it in kids' hands. Uh, Cambridge has been one-on-one computing for a decade.
Yeah, but look at the, of course, all that comes after living, yeah, a living.
I don't know. Cambridge is clearly a nice little spot, I think.
What is it, only five miles out of Boston?
If it's that.
If that.
If it's that, it's across the Charles, right?
Across the Charles, right.
Um, teacher survey, uh, class size concerns. Obviously, this was a concern that was brought to our attention, not only from the high school, middle school, and elementaries, but also even from some of our preschool programs and even our special education programming, where we, where we try to max out every class size and look to do as fast effective as we can. Um, no question, we have some class size issues, especially in our elementary schools of thirties and thirty-ones, um, over in Oracle's Lane. Um, some, even in, okay, I'm, we saw some twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-nines. Middle school, again, the high twenties and some edging to thirties. And certainly, we are concerned about those and know that, um, that's somewhat a budgetary issue and, and it's very difficult for us to, to address it in a likely. Uh, the, the stress and strain that teachers feel with those class sizes are things that are real and certainly their comments on their survey regarding this matter are not only accurate and truthful, but they are a positive concern not only for this committee, but for, obviously, those of us in administration. That unfortunately, to fix that is difficult without the opportunity to increase the number of teachers that we have, uh, in the district. And while we split together preliminary budget that we probably helped with some of those concerns, we know that that will be somewhat difficult. Remember too, that some of our initial reductions from the preliminary budget included a, a number of staffing positions in the high school and, um, we have some retirements in the, in the elementary schools. We think it's going to be very difficult to obviously, um, not replace those retirees, but replacing them will probably mean transferring people around. Uh, so class size concerns continue to be real. They're, I know not, they're not only our concerns, they're your concerns and teachers certainly right to be, um, not really concerned about it, but a little bit, uh, sometimes stressed about it. Uh, secondarily, we continue to work on teacher morale concerns. Uh, I do have a handout here, I'd like to just make you pass around. I'll give you a stack to go around and it's just an Education Week survey talking about nationally, the things that you read and the. No, that's just copies of this that I'll pass over there.
So it's the same one going around?
Yeah. Uh, if you take a look at this at the advisory, you will see that some of the concerns in morale that our teachers express are expressed nationally.
Yeah.
And some of the things that are troublesome for teachers are also troublesome for administrators. The amount of assessment, high stakes testing, they're, they're also concerns for parents. And so when we look at this, we know that, how can we fix some teacher morale concerns? Um, if I, if I were in charge and didn't have to comply with some of the federal and state mandates, I could help more. Uh, certainly, we can try very hard to give teacher a voice and I think this is a process that we are moving through where, where evidence, representation from the association and hopefully our work closely together, we'll try to continue to work with teacher morale concerns. It is really difficult to be in a class of thirty-two and not be stressed and not find your day very long, very troublesome and very, very, um, work intense. Uh, I know that some of you have taught, you know of what I speak. Others of you who have not, probably will never appreciate the twenty-four, you know, hour, seven-day-a-week job a teacher has. You don't just come home and, you know, leave the classroom. You bring with them the artifacts of the day and try to correct them and give feedback and provide opportunities for students to grow academically and obviously intellectually. So moving on to teacher concerns, concerns about meeting the needs of struggling students. Teachers have deep concern about this. They see students coming into their classrooms and with social, emotional issues that are very difficult to deal with. They're even more difficult to deal with in large class sizes. We have, I think, worked very hard at the elementary schools to put together intervention programs to provide teachers with, uh, intervention specialists, intervention tutors, uh, being able to tease apart, uh, students into different groups so that we could provide them with very specific intervention based upon, uh, you know, testing data. Obviously, that's in our second round of cuts and a piece of that, some of you have been involved in learning more about the, the intervention program and you can see deep concern. We have real efforts made at the elementary, but certainly, uh, those struggling students who go into the middle school go there with very little additional support when compared to what we've done at the elementary school. These are costly efforts, we agree. Um, and, and they're efforts that sometimes people say, um, you know, they've, they've got a teacher, when I was in school, I had thirty-five and we did just fine. Well, you know what? It isn't when I was in school. It's all about their future and our past. So we continue to work on the needs of struggling students and teacher comments about those are, are real. Uh, and I would suspect the needs of struggling students are less well, um, shall we say, addressed at the middle and high school than at the elementary school. Uh, concerns about professional development, always concerns about professional development. Some days we wish we didn't have to do it. Other days, we wish it was something different. Other days, why do we have to do this because this is what the state says? And you hear probably, and read in newspapers about DDMs, district determined measures, um, efforts at the state level to have us do, um, a, a kind of testing programs which is high stakes for teachers. And then we're supposed to utilize it as part of the evaluation system, but we know that it is, it is bad policy. However, it is required. Um, the amount of time people have spent on, um, the development and utilization of DDMs is a criminal thing because we know that it's not helping, it's not helping kids and it's not helping teachers.
The department's not backing off on this.
Oh, no. Well, the commissioner is not.
The commissioner.
And I think his advisor, advisor seems to be following in lockstep. Pfizer is the secretary of education. Um, so while those concerns about professional development, our professional development sometimes is dedicated to, to the state and federal mandates that we know aren't necessarily what we need right now or in the best interest of kids. And so while the morale of teachers sometimes suffers because of that, please understand that the morale of administrators is much better. I mean, we find, we're, we're the implementers, we're the responsible party for being able to sign the thing on the pains of perjury that we've done these things and yet we know that it may not be the thing that our students need right now. So we continue to work on that. We do have a, a, a committee, a more thought-based committee for professional development so teachers will have more voice in the kind of activities and programs that we are offering. Dr. Allen?
On the side, um, professional development, in my mind, when I hear Jordan is doing this or Thiel is doing that, or whatever about these touted overseas programs, that seems in my mind to be the major difference. Is good, high-quality professional development where there's time, there's legality, there's some responsibility, all that sort of stuff for the teachers in that. And the other comment I would make is, you alluded to this elementary program. I think that while that's not labeled professional development.
For sure.
What you have done in identifying problems in students, bringing in specialists that know this, how to deal with that sort of thing, providing information and knowledge to teachers, letting them use it for kids all up and down the scale, the administrators, their learning is, that is professional development of the highest order in my mind.
Job embedded, high-quality, you know, certainly over extended periods of time.
Absolutely. And I, you know, I can go on, 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 and I know I will cease to do that. But the problem is in our world, we have teacher development, we believe in that, teacher development. We also should be calling it professional learning because in any professional job, you learn continuously. So it's professional learning. It's that we get into this thing of professional development and we get stuck and then sometimes we get these mandates that sometimes upset us because you're right. Why are we still on about this? Can I do these other things? I want to do more professional learning on this particular thing that's working in Finland. How does that affect our kids? How do we, so we, we, I think more of the professional learning perspective, but we'll get that in time. It becomes more of a, you know, ownership rather than pushed down, it's a we.
But, you know, and just, just from a teacher morale perspective and, and understand that teacher morale is not only impacted by what happens right here on the ground, it also happens on, like, what happens in the newspaper.
Environment.
And, you know, when you, when you look at the, the Rutland effort to pass a million-dollar override for schools and, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar for the municipal side, and the municipal side passes and the school side goes down in flames and the same thing happens in the tax. And you see Dudley Chowton in the paper today saying, no more cuts in our school budget. You see Schuwsbury saying, more fees, let's make more bus fees. We've got to get more fees so we can at least get the kids the books they need.
Douglas went down.
Yes, Douglas. I mean, so, and Douglas, I think, is the lowest per pupil expenditure in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Well, they.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's always much more state help than, than Douglas, but Cheryl can trust, check that out, but for sure, that has been always the, the situation.
Another override denied in Douglas this week.
And, and I'm just saying that it's, it's, it's very difficult to be the teacher, even in the adjoining district, who says, really? And knowing that our budget may be heading to the override situation, it's a, it's, it's tough. It's tough to be them right now. It's hard to be me right now.
I mean, I appreciate that a lot of this has to do with the state, the mandates, the cutting of, in the survey, I saw that we, we learned that the logic and fairness of transfers, not that they have, but also professional development, the timing, the flexibility that we pay for it to them, things that are on the administration, not on the mandates from the state and the mandates of training and the mandates of the budget, you win, you have that. So that's what's been said to me. And then I, you know, I don't want to just gloss this over and say, well, you know, if we had more money in it, all the teachers would be happy. I didn't get that impression from the survey. Some of those numbers were really disfavorable. They were like ninety, over ninety percent dissatisf, dissatisfactory, which you can't explain this way. And also, it was brought up right afterwards and I think we all do respect you, which was a little bit sure, oh, it was hard to present that, that the teachers had, you know, they presented this. And when we actually saw the survey, that was like, a lot of dissatisfaction. So I'm wondering what, beyond just the saying about the, the money, what the administration was going to do, communicate that, or with the teachers, that these are things we have to do and give the teachers a sense of fairness. I think I saw that in the survey, that they didn't think that they were being treated fairly, giving the culture.
Well, um, I, I would tell you that in my conversations with numerous groups of teachers on a regular basis and, um, in numerous conversations with Evan, you know, three or four times in the last week, um, there's no, there's no question that there are, there are some situations of dissatisfaction that I can't fix. I'm not, I'm, I don't, I'm not a magician and there will be transfers that people will not like this year. And Evan and I have put some protocols together where I will sit with each individual person and explain why. Um, they may not agree with that, but, um, the tran, for example, about five or six people were transferred. Ninety-two percent of the respondents to the survey said they didn't like transfers. They've never been transferred in their life.
So did they see the impact on their friends and they see the impact on the morale of the building?
Yeah, yeah. So, so my, my concern was, yeah, it was a rough spring where we had to make some adjustments in where people were going to teach. We had to have some people who had a special ed certification but had been in a classroom setting for X number of years, but we needed a sped teacher and we didn't need that extra classroom person, at least in the spot they were in. So we put somebody in special ed and they, they had wanted no part of special ed, but unfortunately they're certified in it, so we had to make those adjustments. There's no question that when we transfer folks around and, and even, even the conversations about closing a building, trust me, the angst in teachers because they do not want their particular place of employment modified, they, they really don't. They understand in their, in their heads, they're going, we get it, we get it. But, but when it really is going to be my classroom, Maureen, moving to maybe another, with another group of teachers or whatever, it's going to, I'm, I'm going to tell you, go do the best we can to work through all of that with communities. Um, and, and maybe the communities will all say, we're going to pay the bill, we're not going to, we're not going to close schools. And, and that would be wonderful, but I don't know if that's going to happen. Um, so we try to, um, have opportunities for, for teachers to, and we will, uh, meet with every one of them who can transfer. And sometimes what they don't appreciate is, I'm, I'm a fifth grade teacher, but for years I have been training in math program. And so I've got a math program. And Trish Willington needs a math person. She doesn't need another ELA person to work in fifth grade. So I have to take somebody who's a math person, move them over maybe to, to, okay, to Trish because she needs a math person. And they're saying, well, I could teach ELA. I, yeah, you could, but the problem is you haven't been through three years of training and, you know, the person who does have that training is going to perhaps, you know, do a better job for, for the students in that classroom. So that's been hard for teachers, uh, to, to appreciate that, that sometimes, you know, um, and some of the, and we took some strong teams and put somebody who's brand new or struggling in an area, we put them in stronger teams. And I wish we could, and maybe we can do this, evidence that, talk to people who've been, you know, in that new position for a year and how's it been? Because I think some people have come to us and said, oh my God, I never should have complained that it has been the best thing that's ever happened to me. Others maybe not so much, but I'm not trying to gloss it over. I take Umbridge to comment. A math person who runs away from responsibility or doesn't take it into account, my responsibility, not only my responsibilities, but my part in, in their discontent. Okay? I wish I could say that it was all me because I could just change me and I could fix it all. That's not realistic. And if I were to sit down with all of them and say, okay, what could I do differently? And they go, oh, it's not you, it's this and this and this. And I go, well, I can't fix this and this and this. But I will tell you, my work with the QRTA, with, um, with Evan is not to sugarcoat anything. And I do take Umbridge.
No, but also too, at the same time, you're not arbitrary and capricious. There are reasons why transfers need to happen and there is something called the best of the system. So we want to keep people employed, but at the same time, we also want people to work with us. And that times when things get better and I'm able to get you back to that other position will help you. It becomes a, a, a relationship here, you know, for the best of the system here.
If I could, you know, in the, in the past, some people found out about transfers, group burners coming up prematurely. Some of them are right, some of them are not. And sometimes you just get a letter in the mail. And I have to say that we went to Dr. Marshall, she knows those concerns, and they've been really responsive to them. So what else can I ask from my, my perspective for my teachers when I go to them and say, look, respectfully, I, I think you've handled this not very well and people have had it and people, it is about relationships. You know, this isn't IBM where you just find out you're losing your job. They want to know as much as they can about why, but they also want to be communicated to. And as Dr. Marshall said, I think we have protocols in place that we worked on together that I think is going to satisfy a lot of the concerns that teachers have, have with them. However, my job is to also make clear to teachers that when you have attrition or you have job cuts, some transfers are unavoidable.
Correct.
Okay? And sometimes even when you tell a human being that it's still difficult, so we need to balance the, okay, which ones should have been handled better versus, okay, um, this is. to balance the, okay, which ones should have been handled better versus, okay, this is unavoidable.
Absolutely.
And I think we have a good system that's going to be in place this year, and the HR department at Quavon with Sheila and Maureen, working with them, with me, has already sent out a seniority list of people way ahead of time, they've sent out dates of employment, they've been working awesome with us. And that's the way it should be, it's a transparent process.
But I, I got, I got Mark, Mr. Wiegler, but also, I just wanted to just mention that although you're right, and I'm glad, we're glad that the superintendent's report is covering this to bring us to light in all this, because you're right, our job as policymakers and we deal, we're on the other side of the collective bargaining agreement, at the same time, it really is the superintendent's job and their faculty and her administration, his or her administration, to make it work, and it really is good that we're having this dialogue this way, and, and it's not a push, it's a learning piece and understand some things, so.
And just one more thing, and I'll be gone. Our contract has basically no transfer language, okay? So you probably see where this is going with the law.
Yeah, I can predict that. Mark.
Yeah, just a couple things. You know, one, I think job satisfaction level nationally is, folks are dissatisfied, probably what, seventy-five percent, and that's private sector and public sector.
Correct.
You compare yourself, you compare it to like IBM, you know, this isn't IBM. Well, to be honest with you, I think going forward, you're going to see the public sector run more and more like the private sector, with restructuring of benefits, with, with a lot of different things coming forward, because we no longer have to build as taxpayers, as a nation, to pay. So, so I think you're going to see, you know, people have to realize that, you know, going forward, there's going to be a lot of changes. Maybe you don't like what's in the contract, but, you know, fifteen years down the road, that contract could be a whole lot more rigid and, and sort of more in favor of administration than so. I see it happening at state level, and, you know, it's going to happen at the local level. It's just like benefits are being paid now, and quite honestly, the public sector, you know, look at Detroit, you know, look at Chicago, you know, benefits are going out the window, you know, I hate to see that, but in reality, that's, that's life, you know, people have to realize that.
You should just accept it.
No, no, I'm not saying you should accept it, but short of, I don't know, I don't know what the years of this, because we're heading in that direction, we've been headed in that direction for a long time, but it's not a good thing, I don't agree with it.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is reality, I mean, it's, it's like, who has, who has a pension out in the, in the private sector, looking out to like fifteen percent of companies? I mean, where it used to be like sixty, sixty-five percent? You know, there's a real world out there, and we're just part of it, and you can fight it, but, you know, job, job security really isn't there for anybody.
Right, and that's why... The world is just a value of middle class.
And that, that's exactly why I want to go back to what Dr. Marshall was giving us for an overview, as we're going forward on this, and you're right, there is something that we are, we'll work through, and it's called the collective bargaining agreement. Management has rights and we have worked with it with collective bargaining, but you're right, I'm glad that these discussions are put on the table to us, it's not just one thing, it is, it's a myriad of things, and there are things, there are things that are beyond our control. Go ahead.
And I, I think the important thing is, is that in our most recent conversations with Evan and Cheryl, we talk about the need to have outside, you know, people coming in and put together a survey in the hall, and to kind of benchmark how we're doing. And because, of course, the teacher survey, of course, I said, "Well, I think the questions are da-da-da-da." And, and in the IB survey that, that of course administration put together, they said, "Well, we think the questions were whatever." So, of course, we look at each other's questions and the way in which we ask them, and we're, you know, we're doing a little sword fight, but, and so we said, "You know, the best thing is, let's get some real high-quality people to come in, put together the survey, ask about these things again, how we do it." Because to just look at this and talk about them is not important, what's important is to say, "What are we doing and how, have we moved in the right direction in six months or eight months?" So we don't intend to just give this to you and then, you know, we're walking away and nothing is ever going to happen again. So, and just, and I know you had the opportunity to, if you go on, Cheryl, to the next slide, the opportunity to look at some of the things that the responses for IB, and, you know, the majority of the teacher response indicates that there's a belief that the trimester schedule is developed only for IB. Not true, but obviously, if it's perception, it's reality, and so our ability to, to work with teachers through what a schedule could look like and why it was a trimester schedule and so forth, is certainly more work for us to do. Large class sizes in the high school are the result of IB. There are large class sizes in the high school, but not in comparison to the middle school and to the elementary schools. I mean, I would say that the high school probably has some of the better class sizes. We do have some very small classes, some small classes in IB, some small classes in AP, some small classes in PE.
An AP, PE, art.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, well, the art department, they're special people. What they do is there's four kids who sign up for portfolio, and six kids who sign up for painting, and three kids who sign up for something else, they just say, "Give them all to me, and I'll teach three different things at the same time." And they bring, bring students along through that process, and the art department has been wonderfully, not only amenable, but extremely effective in doing, in doing their work. Teachers also indicate that IB students have privileges beyond other students, and I believe that their disperception is absolute reality. There were some mistakes made there, we own those mistakes, and those were wrong, where they were sort of singled out and given special privileges throughout the school day, other kids noticed that, it just was not right. Students should have a choice to take IB English in grades eleven and twelve, Sheila and I talked about that, we looked at the schedule, and we, we agreed that we can make that happen. In the roll-up, we should have not said IB English in grades eleven and twelve, we should have said, "This is grade eleven English." And those students who wish to pursue sort of this contract, okay, this sort of contract learning in IB could do so and, you know, go into the certificate program or the, or the formal program. We could have, should have, and can, can address that, I think. GPEA weight of IB courses should be adjusted, we agree, and that adjustment has already taken place.
Okay.
IB has not caused rigor in ninth and tenth grade classes to increase, that's what teachers feel, I don't have any information that would say they're not right, and we are, I kind of said to ninth grade and tenth grade, you know, in the administration, "What's happening there? What about the rigor? And, you know, are kids going to be ready for AP?" I will tell you, there are AP scores, are certainly not where we would like them, our AP scores are below the state average, and we have some concern. And so, that's an issue that, you know, may, and it may be that the ninth and tenth grade, what's happening there, may not be rigorous enough to really prepare kids for the, for the AP work or the IB work that everyone's chosen. IB and AP classes limit access to other electors, that is absolutely true. If you want to take an AP class, it's three trimesters, it's all year, and so if you're going to take it all year, I mean, and you want to take two of them, you know what I mean, you're really plugging up your schedule with AP classes, that I can't fix, I can't fix that. If you want to take ROTC, you're plugging up your schedule with that elective, but that's a choice, that's what an elective is, you elect to participate in either, you know, some of the elective areas. We have some kids who, they're art majors, for all intensive purposes, spend an awful lot of time in the arts. That's a great, great thing, they fulfill their graduation requirements, but it does mean maybe they're not in music, though. We have some kids who are heavily involved in music, and they spend a lot of their time in music and so forth, but if you're in IB or AP, both of those areas, because, you know, they're rigorous classes, they last all year for, for the testing, you know, situation, so yes, they do live with other electors, but again, that's a choice. But if you're in an elective area other than IB or AP, you really don't want IB and AP to be too much around, because that means some of your kids aren't going to sign up for business or art or whatever, so there's always that struggle. The majority of teachers indicate that IB is aligned with the Quavon mission and vision as well as NEAS, that's our accreditation group, the new SAT, the Twenty-First Century Skills and College Career Readiness. So we know we have alignment, it's not this class is just, you know...
Way up there.
Way up there. IB, IB obviously, AP is also aligned, and we're looking constantly to ensure that we align up all of our class and course offerings and align with all of those areas. It is important to offer challenging courses, teachers believe that. Teachers post-grads who responded to the most recent survey called for more rigorous classes and said, "You need to make us work harder." We're not, we're not talking about IB and not talking about AP, they were saying, "You just need to make us work harder, write more, do more computer, you just need to make us work harder in high school." Special education students can succeed, teachers believe in IB and AP courses. A majority of students who have taken IB courses have benefited, teachers agree with that. Departments and programs should be allowed to recruit students, teachers agree with that, but some of the recruitment practices, we think need to be visited, not only IB recruitment practices, but all of the other, the other departments, because others, understand, Mr. Dewar used to say, "If you want the neurolectives to go, what'd he say? Sell them, get out there and sell them." And so, obviously, they get out there and sell them, because if, if I'm a science teacher and I want my new biotechnology program to get filled up, trust me, if I've got a biology kid who I think is kind of interested in science, my hooks are up.
Hook him in.
I'm saying, "Hey, you could really be good at this." And I always used to say to kids, "Who will save this world? Scientists will." I said, "The rest of you are going to muck it up, but if you got a chance, if you want to be a scientist, we can help."
And the tech people are right behind you.
Yeah, so, so I, I think that we, we know that there is recruitment, there's recruitment in ROTC, there's recruitment in AP, there's recruitment in IB, there's recruitment, and we, and certainly in the arts, in music, so we, we know that there has to be some way in which we say, it has to be reasonable, it can't be, what would you call it today? You didn't call it bullying, you said that was not a rigorous...
Force manipulation.
Force manipulation, we, we, we had a couple of conversations about, but there's no question, there's a, you know, let's face it, if I, if I believe in, you know, IB or AP or biotechnology or whatever, then I'm okay. I believe it so much that I really want all kids to have that opportunity, I don't believe in this trying to, you know...
It's a good thing.
Huh?
It's a good thing.
Well, it is and it isn't.
What are you doing? You identify kids who could, they're charlatans?
But sometimes, if, if you have the kind of personality where you're sort of a high piper type, and we have those teachers around, and, you know, they're really good at it, and that may not be in the best interest of the student, really. And so trying to understand what the, the needs of the student are and what he or she should have opportunities and access to, really has to be a well-thought-out plan, and, yeah, I'm...
The synthesis of your science ridiculous label is Jimmy Bechta in poetry.
Excellent, yeah.
We talked about a high piper.
Absolutely.
What a great, great, great teacher.
Absolutely.
In poetry, your science statement would say that that was non-essential or useless in going forward, and yet kids would do wonderful things with that.
Absolutely.
The, the one thing I just have to say, and it was in my social studies class today, some people observed a quick meeting, we're teaching the kids really how to identify the difference between that and... We as adults sometimes struggle to know the difference between that. And I think there's been some situations in the high school where kids believe you take this certain course, is absolutely going to help them get more knowledge of it, or have a better future, but maybe that administrator and teacher believes that, but is it true? The kid leaves there because they trust the person they want to do their best believe in that.
I agree. Social studies is an area where that's solved.
Yeah.
Well, I made your dinner.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, you know, we're, we just want to make sure that recruitment practices are reasonable, you know, and, and in the best interest of students, not just filling up, you know, so I'll be able to keep all the science people in the department. Dave knows, Dave knows what we're talking about, but pardon me with that.
First name is?
It says the district, the teachers generally in the survey said that the district should subsidize IB and AP exam fees, we do that, we, there's a grant out there that would help us do both of these, especially for our kids with free year-use lunch. We have thirty percent, little over thirty percent of our students at, at the high school are pre-year-use lunch, or, what do we call them now? Economically disadvantaged, we think, that's the new term, and as a result, if we said to them, "You have to pay the fees yourself," probably we would deny them access to these programs. So teachers do, you know, generally, we, we should subsidize IB, their group classes, free exam fees. IB classes are not too challenging, they, they think obviously that probably kids can do well. IB does not put too much emphasis on international awareness, the general faculty does not think that, although there is, there are some who do. So moving forward, I think we talked a lot about moving forward, moving forward is, and as I said to Evan, as much as sometimes getting a survey that demonstrates to you that, "Oh, God, they think that," I harken back to the day when I was in middle school, or used to be called junior high principal, and I entered a junior high that was a little bit out of control, and I can remember the teachers, their expectation of me was, man, I was going to, I was going to straighten that place out, trust me, I was up to that challenge. About two-thirds of the way through the year, I did this little survey with the kids, and one of the questions I asked them, "If you had a problem, would you seek Albusus Marshall?" And like eighty-five percent said, "Absolutely not, we want no party going near her." Now, the place was straightened out, those kids were, you know, but I had gone a little too far, and certainly, in, in rethinking that, I said, "Okay, that, that's not who I want to be, that's not who I am," and obviously, I retweeted it. And as we look at the information that the teachers have provided for us, and this new survey, the information about international bachelor liars, I believe that's what an educational organization should do, is the opportunity to agree and disagree and have conversations about teaching and learning, and try all the time to keep open minds, listen to one another, and ultimately make the best decision for kids. This is not about me, this is not about Mark, it's not about Evan or Sheila, it's about, do we, do we provide what our kids need? And in very limited resources, will we organize the distribution of those resources moving forward so that we do the absolute best for kids? Now, sometimes, sometimes, you know, it's hard, because as adults, we want it to be the absolute best for us. Sometimes it's not the absolute best for, for teachers or for the administration, but it may be the best for the kids. And I will tell you that, you know, I, I don't know of too many people who work in this industry who don't believe the latter, that it's absolutely the best for kids. Sometimes we need to discriminate, what's the best for kids? And that's what we've been, I think, struggling through for the last six months, what's the best, you know, professional learning that will really make a difference for kids? But sometimes I don't think I need to know something, but if I knew it, it really might help me with kids. I didn't think I needed to not be quite so severe as a disciplinarian, but I needed to hear that, and when I did, I made, I made adjustments. I would not have believed that that was the case, just because kids were darn frightened of me, worked, worked in the classroom, they didn't want to come down and see me, but it, it changed, it changed the way I wish I behaved, and I know that, I've worked with many of these people in this school district for dozens of years, and they with me, and we have often had disagreements, we have done crazy things together, we have done, you know, furloughs, we have done, ruined old schools when we overcrowded, we built together, you know, seven different, different schools, we passed I don't know how many debt exclusions, and, you know, we, we did all of those things to, to set the stage to have the best off educational opportunities for us students. I don't always have the right answer, but I will tell you, I am not coach-minded, I am open-minded, I will fight for what I believe, and, but you probably know that, too, and, but I will, will always, I hope, be the kind of leader who listens to the people with whom I work, because most of the time, most of the time, the people with whom you work, if you listen, and they listen as well, we will, we will create a better and better organization. These are very tough years for us, very tough years, it's not really all right, it's about we're, we're struggling, we're struggling, we're holding on by our fingernails. And I talked with a teacher the other day from an academic school district, it wasn't ours, they don't have enough books to teach, so they were going to read a novel, and I think it was, it was a... But there's not enough books. So the teacher decided to cut out little big, little lottery tickets, and so, if you were lucky to get a lottery ticket, you got a book. If you didn't get a lottery ticket, you said, "Well, there's a PDF on the, you can read it online, you can ask your parent for four dollars to buy the book." And the student said to the teacher, "Yeah, but, you know, the last book, you just, you just bought us those books." And the teacher said, "Yeah, a hundred and fifty dollars, I bought them new books on Amazon, I can't keep doing that." And you just say, "What are, what are we doing with that?" And I mean, and if you read the newspaper, and, you know, it's, it's all around us, we're not the only school struggling, and as I work at the state level, with, with the World Schools Coalition, with also the Mass Association for Regional Schools, with the Mass Association of, of school superintendents, I will tell you that the whole foundation formula is not working. They know it, they acknowledge it, they say, "We owe you billions, but we have no money." So you're not getting any. And the Wells ladies, and the Westons, and the Brooklines, and the Lexington's, and Ireland's, and all of those schools, I talk with superintendents, with people who aspire to be superintendents, and what do they say, Sheila? Don't even look for a job west of four ninety-five, don't even look, because you can't succeed, you cannot succeed, because you have no money and no capacity to succeed, and that's pretty sad, that's pretty, and if you think, if it's bad here... That's pretty, and if you think it's bad here, come with me to some of the rural school meetings and talk with people who are Franklin County, out in further in the western part of the state. It's really tough times. And so, as we look at this opportunity to work together and talk about, you know, how you can be better and so forth, I welcome the opportunity, I welcome the challenge, and I thank Evan and QRT executive team. And we have worked well together, and I do need more opportunity to do so.
Dr. Allen.
Yeah. One of the points Maureen made, I want to lean on a little bit, is the fact that everybody involved here cares about kids and how to do the best for kids. All the school committee members, the teachers, the administrators, kind of speak the face of it. That's why I've been here so long. Because it is a place that does care for kids, and does wish the best for kids. I remember forty years ago saying, you know, whatever we need for kids, we'll get, we'll get an extra nickel, but we'll get, hopefully, we'll, we can do it now. But that's why it's worth doing the fight, who we're doing it for and who we're doing for.
And I think as far as the international baccalaureate, I'm going to ask the administration, I'm sorry, the school committee to look more carefully at all of that data from that. So, if you have other questions, on the ninth, we can continue that conversation as to, you know, where to from here, as far as, you know, what we would do with international baccalaureate. There's really no way in which we cannot at least continue through the next year because of the students who are transitioning through the program. We have the program, the program of studies, and there will be some individuals who will sign up for it. There are options about not doing the diploma, but just doing some certificate programs. So, we have some options in front of us at this point in time. You know, I think you know my position on it. It's, I think it also is affected by Sheila and the superintendency in our work. It took us since 2009, 2009, professional development, all in grants, all funded by grants, to get the program, to get us classified as an international baccalaureate school. There's no question it's not the end-all, the be-all. It absolutely isn't. It isn't for everybody, perhaps. We believe that it is for more kids than people believe at this time. But, so we look to the committee for some help and assistance in this, and as we move forward, as to our direction. Evan and I have, you know, disagreed professionally about, you know, maybe where we should go. You can see that there's different, divergent opinions in the survey. And I'm so happy to see the number of anecdotal responses that we have. I think Evan has, is going to open opportunities for his people who might want to come and speak to the committee with a pro upon. I know that Dr. Allen's committee, who's starting October, and obviously, they'll be starting, and you know, all that program of studies look like going forward. And we continue our work. And as I said to Evan, I can't be happier that the thing we disagree about has something to do with an intellectual pursuit for kids. I mean, because usually, what the association and the superintendent are fighting about, how many minutes we have for lunch, or some other silly thing like that. And so, if there is something that we are going to have, you know, sort of a struggle with, I'm happy to say it's about the intellectual pursuits for our students.
Maureen, I don't think it's the intellectual part here. I think it's a matter of the amount. And the reason being that, every time I went to the rescue, that's the report that I get.
Well, if you read the report, you're not talking to everybody because there's a difference of opinion. And certainly, that's obvious in the report. There's no question.
I read the report, I know it. There's a lot of information in there.
Well, we hope so.
For those of us that wouldn't care enough to read it.
Yes.
It will get quite your opinion.
Well, what I tried to do is to make sure you had all the information, all the comments and all of the, you know, the responses, because certainly, we want a very open process. And the concern that I have, obviously, is, what we can do is to think about it, and on June 9th, hopefully, decide how we're going to be doing it.
I just want to...
Just remember that happy people give you happy clothes. Unhappy people going to give you crap.
Well, you know what? There are times when I'm not happy. Okay? There are times when I'm not happy. I'm not happy with what happens with the budget. I'm not happy with, you know, some of the circumstances that exist in our communities and the things that are happening with our students. But you know what? As a professional, okay, I have an obligation to give it my best. And sometimes, going through change is difficult, and it's hard for teachers when they go through change. I would say it's hard to be a teacher right now. It's tough. It's tough. You've got large class sizes, we've got a lot more work, we're, you know, shifting to a more skill-based, inquiry-based way of teaching. It's a different way. And it's hard work. I mean, Sheila, you can add, it's hard work. And we're saying, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up, make any student, because we know, you know, the new revision of MCAS is going to have demands on our students that we have to make sure they're ready for. And parents are at the point where they're ready to throw the tests into the hopper, I think, because that's, we spend so much time doing it and preparing for it. It's tough to be in schools right now. Some of them don't have the things that they need for students, you know, in order to prepare for their classes, and we can't provide it, and it's hard.
Just...
I'll go back to Mr. Wiggler's statements, when he made them as far as contractual obligations, et cetera, et cetera. If we end up going that route, we're going to end up with teachers that do not care for students.
They won't even be teachers anymore. They can't even get them.
Exactly. What are we going to have in there? Mechanical objects that say, why don't you mail them a check instead of me showing up here? And that's what I'm looking at.
Well, I would tell you that, you know, it's tough to be a teacher, and there's not a whole lot of people who go off to school to be a teacher.
Correct.
And, you know, I hate to say this, but when my daughter was an English major, I'm saying, what the heck are you going to do with that? I said, don't go into journalism, for God's sake. There's not even a job there. Okay? So, she decides she's going to go to law school, and there's too many of them, too. She's going to go to law school. But as she gets to her first semester, she did fine. She says, this is crushing my soul. Okay? And I'm going to tell you how much I paid for that semester of law school. This is crushing my soul. I think I'm going to go to BC and get an English master's degree. Oh, great. What are you going to do with that? English, okay, bachelor's and an English master's degree? She teaches. And the struggle for, to watch her as a new teacher, you know, five years into the profession. If she stays in the profession, I will be shocked. And in addition, I will say, when she said to me, I think I'm going to be a teacher, I was not applauding.
Ninety percent of people have to, five years, stay. Have to five years, stay. Mark, and then I want to...
My name is Bechler, sorry. No, I just, I think going forward, the point I was trying to make is that, you know, whether you're a teacher or you're an administrator, you have to be a whole lot more light-hearted in your perspective about the workplace, about benefits, really going forward. Because it's, you know, times are changing, and we don't want anybody to... But I think you just have to be a whole lot more light-hearted. That's my only...
Mark, you know, when I became a teacher, that was a change in my career, my life. And it was the best thing I ever did, by the way. Because I enjoyed it immensely to help us students in front of me. How about the last few years? And it was because of administration.
I wasn't here then.
Yeah.
Dave.
The information in both surveys, the one that Evan heard earlier and this one here, I have a perspective, and that's what I'm interpreting this in. And I was transferred in 2010. It wasn't my choice, but I will thank Dr. Marshall on my dying day for that, because it was the best move at the end of my career, my last four years, that could have happened for me. It gave me a good shot in the rear end, and met some new people, did some new things. And I came to the high school in that year. I didn't know quite what I was doing, but I had a lot of good help. Evan was a mentor. I had another mentor. Asked for them. People came and gave me help. Evan walked in with his curriculum, just gave me his curriculum of US 2. Another teacher, the same with US 1. They weren't hovering, but when I needed help, they were there for me. And the first year there, it was all about me asking. So, I understood that. I got that. That was real focus for me, too, because I wasn't sure what else was going on. But no matter what we did in the building, it was me.
Yes, great.
And that was successful. But after that, I think the morale issue comes in when it was DDMs and Aspen and Atlas. And I think the teachers just felt that it was, and I can remember as a staff member in the auditorium, Sheila would come in, and it would be a new presentation, and she knew all the eyes were rolling, and she'd smile, and she'd have to roll it out with all, as much enthusiasm as she could muster, to get everybody on board. And I think that if the people were there in the building at that time, they're feeling all that and then some. And it's the other pressures as well. And I think that they feel particularly impotent because they know that the administration, as much as they don't want to make them do the things that they have to do, have to do it. And I think that they feel disenfranchised, not necessarily by the administration. Nobody uplying from them at the state or the federal level is listening. The stakeholders aren't making any decisions about what's going on in the classroom. The people that are in there every day, they're being told, and they're being told they're not doing a good job. So, I think that it's really overwhelming for a lot of people. And I had the luxury of thinking, well, four more years, three more years, so boy. And then last year, Mike Jevons kept saying, well, you won't have to worry about this next year. And so, but I think that they, what I really liked tonight was, one little thing was that when you said that you're going to be sitting down with the transfer people, because I think the lot, what I heard back was that, no matter what the reason was and how it was communicated, people felt that there was something wrong with themselves, that they had done something wrong with being a punishment, of being a worker, because I don't get along, and so and so, or I wasn't doing this well. So, I think if you're explaining, and I think that the people that are, that surrounded these people who transferred had had the people there and sympathy for them, and they took on the feelings that these people have. And that was part of the issue that I'm sure Evan was dealing with last year. And we hear that was, I think, about one-third of it. So, the other thing is, my point is, the only thing we have any control over in our lives is our attitude about the challenges that we face. And as hard as it is, I think some of these people have decided, and I don't want to make it sound cool, but either I'm going to continue on this path, or I'm going to find something else that's going to satisfy me. And I don't need to be cold or whatever, but I think that that's part of it.
Some of the realities of the decision-making adults have to make in the teaching world of what is happening. You're absolutely right. It's not just here, it's throughout the country.
Because the interesting thing was, when we were doing transfers and so forth, you know, of course, people didn't notice. We would move Susie Smith. And they'd say, oh, because Susie Smith has got just the skill set we need to go to OKAM or firewood, go wherever. And I would say, wait a minute, wait a minute, where does Susie Smith live? And somebody'd say, oh, she lives in Ashburn. And I'd say, oh, well, let's rethink that. Do we want to really drag her all the way over to... I said, how old are our kids? How old are his kids? Does he have childcare? Does, will it be hard? And I mean, we did, and I said, well, no, we can't move them. Let's think about that. Let's make sure we make, you know, a happy teacher if we can, and not put somebody in a situation...
We must.
Well, I can't. I can't keep everybody absolutely happy. I wish I could. But as happy as I can.
And I just want to kind of say thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the depth of looking at this. I think that we can, well, we'll wrap up and move this along. I think as a committee, we have a superintendent who's not afraid of a challenge, or an expectation, or a concern, or a question, or go deeper. And is there issue? Let's solve it. And that's what I'm glad I know. We have to give that work to the administration and work with our support staff and our teachers. We have the policy, folks, but I need to say that I do, we do have a superintendent that's not afraid of the challenged task and put up a slide and tell us, this is what, these are our blemishes, people, and we're going to work together to make sure that we have an effective district. And I'm telling fifteen people that are my bosses. So, I can just give credit for saying that as the depth of the said.
And the hope that we have, obviously, as we move forward and we do another survey, that we'll both sit and say, yeah, this isn't as good, we could have done it better after we pay for it. And, but we think somebody outside, you know, who's in the status of skill, talent, and job, and hopeful that we'll be able to, obviously, present to you, and let's see where we are, what we still have to work on.
Thank you for a thorough report. Assistant Superintendent, already covered. Director of Administrative Services.
Oh, I have a warrant report where, has payable warrant 23A and payroll warrant 23, who are signed tonight.
Okay, signed, okay. Teacher Advisory.
Just quick, I would respectfully ask if you folks still have our survey interemail to look that over again before Q9, maybe you guys should before, that's everyone. I stand strong behind those results, and I think that eighty-nine percent of tests that everyone at the state sees speaks to how teachers feel about the ID program, and I don't think that's going to change. However, I do have to add that, you know, the other eleven percent of people deserve to hear their voice heard as well. And I'm going to speak before the high school in the next couple of weeks, and I'm going to tell people that I've spoken a lot on this issue, but I'm going to be a little bit more specific on some concerns on June 9th. And I agree that our survey should have maybe done more to address what the specific concerns were. But I'm going to ask teachers to go forward and speak, and we'll see if they will. If not, I'll continue to be their voice. But I think eighty-nine percent is a very strong statement.
When you give the report, should I bring my crew in to protect you?
Should you bring what?
My crew.
Your crew?
Yeah, the one that Trump is talking about.
Oh, I don't know. We're on the same tape. We're on the same page, we're still two. I mean that, personally, professionally, with Sheila and Maureen, we've had a lot of real intense discussions. And I think sometimes adults sitting around here might question that, and I think sometimes my teachers might question that. But I know that her heart and soul is in the right place, and I don't mind it. And the fact that we have solved almost every issue, or we're moving towards solutions and resolutions, I'm really proud that we're together. This is the one issue that's just kind of still there, and especially, I think, in school based on.
Solutions based. Yes, sir.
Evan, you said eighty-nine percent. Eighty-nine percent are...
Eighty-nine percent of high school teachers, and there were two elementary teachers that also took the survey, whose children went through the program, do not believe that ID is the correct direction for the school system.
What percentage of the teachers in this took this survey?
Almost all of them. Eight, almost eighty percent of teachers overall took it. The exact percentage of in the high school, I would have to go back to the Excel spreadsheet to give you that. I can certainly answer that if we're going to do that.
How was the responder controlled? How do you know one person who took it?
Yeah, we were, man, it was just... Yeah, Sheila admitted, exactly. We were, we went paper ballot. People had to stay in the physical room or was taken. Then we had multiple people counting it afterwards. This took, to say ten hours would be understated. It was absurd the forward evolves and took, because there were people concerned with the pro-ID people might stack all night. There were people concerned, they had to ID people. So, we didn't do survey monkey. We did a physical survey, that then eighteen teachers sat in the room and answered the results. When the teachers came in the room, they were randomly paired up, and they each looked at it, they would answer. at it, they would answer. So I don't know what else we could have done to make it more scientific with the resources that we have, but that was my concern, you just can't have some ID that people sign into. I also think the district did a good job of that. They do survey monkey, but I think they had some fair protocols, and I don't question the validity of their things either. But that was really important to me, because if it's not done right with a paper ballot, and with people not being able to take it out of there, then what does it mean, right?
And we had, I think, all but one high school teacher completed the ID survey. The questions on the teacher survey, you will notice, they were, it was kind of a group thing. It said the IB, MYP, and that was kind of a group thing. So they were talking about two programs, and so we kind of drilled down a little more. But to say that there is, you know, certainly issues with what teachers feel about that program is, you know, is fair, absolutely so.
I have to be selfish. Sometimes I sit here and I'm the person that always brings the bad news. Maybe I don't bring it enough for some people on this board, but I believe so much in this school district. About a week ago, my daughter was in tears at the dinner table. She currently goes to Brookfield Elementary, but my wife is a student in the Aspen School District. And we've decided that it's in her best interest to come here. It's not a decision that I take lightly. So I just want to make it clear, you know, I believe in this school district, and I love this school district. There's a lot of great things going on.
Thank you.
And, you know, Evan and I would have to say, we haven't had a grievance, have we? That's gone anywhere other than maybe to my, maybe to my level. I don't think, I don't think even it's gone to my level, that we haven't resolved pretty quickly. So, you know, we have, I think, good opportunities to continue to work well together and to move the district forward.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Do we have any administrative review, audit? Okay, budget. Mark, we're at the towns.
We, well, we were in OKAM Tuesday? I forget what night I'm wearing, Tuesday night. And now, I've been to a lot of meetings in OKAM, and they are never fun. I would say it was most polite, respectful, reasonable meeting that I've been into OKAM in an age. Well, I'm talking about Selectmen and Finance Committee, they were there, and you know what that's like sometimes. And there were maybe three or four parents there, maybe, maybe.
Five, five hundred.
Yeah. They certainly had conversations about overrides there, not only an override for the school, but to even maintain municipal services. So I think there was conversation.
Who knows? I, I don't, yeah, there was conversation. The Finance Committee, it's like, I know that half of them are just, it, but their solution actually reminded me a lot of our task force, that they're not willing to go forward yet until they have an approval. So they know they're broken, this, not, when I have inertia of this.
And I, Mark, can I answer the question? So far?
No, there is three other towns. Hubbardson is.
Hubbardson is. Hubbardson's going to put a contingent override on. Barry, I don't think, from their initial conversations with us, they don't really want to, but I don't think that they're necessarily unwilling. But the problem, we haven't, it's not a problem, I guess, but there's a recall election in Barry. There's the fire chief issue, there's the police chief issue. So we're like, not even on the radar. When Ellie Downer said, oh, trust me, I'm not going to worry about the school budget because I've got too many other things going on in Barry. And I think the Selectmen recall is on the 17th. So if that happens, then there'll be another election. So we need two Selectmen to put it on. So we, their meeting is not till the 21st of June. We are in the 18th, I think, in Hardwick on Saturday. You know, you've got the meeting sitting in Grand Tree is the 20th. What did they say they were going to do in OKAM? Because they were setting it the other night.
We have a paper today.
Well, they did, they did talk about a date. Yeah, the second.
But they haven't decided what to do.
So, I mean, we could, I mean, imagine the fantasy, we could go into a town meeting even with a very large assessment and pass the budget. It could happen. And once the budget is passed, then the town has to sit around and say, okay, are we going to lay off six, six school committee?
How did this happen?
In your dreams, bud.
It could happen in Barry. It could happen. I mean, because what if, you know, you end up with 400 people there and they vote the school budget? And then it's done. I mean, but they will know. Barry may lead the charge, but nobody's following. So they know that the other towns won't vote it, and it'll be, continue to ratchet down. You're the first meeting in Hubbardson. So Hubbardson's a very good group of parents, you get a lot of support there. I think we'll pass it with a contingent vote. I could be wrong, but I think we'll pass it there. But again, that leaves us with that September override. But I'm not going to give up on Hubbardson. We are prepared, however, to, with the cuts, to go another million. And the concern that Cheryl and I have, and we talk about it all the time, what do we do? Do we open school with the $2.5 million cuts, because we really won't have a budget, and then cut the budget in September and lay off people then? Do we not, do we lay off everybody and then open the school with none of the services that we, you know, the services that we've talked about eliminating? And then if the override passes, call people back?
Well, we're going to stay tuned, and we may have.
Well, stay tuned.
Not only June meetings, we'll have July meetings, too. And so I think we need, as a committee, to be aware of. Our summer work may need to be happened.
Yeah. I think that the June meeting, obviously, I think we're going to have to have a meeting, probably a, see, they're so late in June.
Yeah.
It's going to be hard to have a June meeting, so like you say, probably early July, because the school committee will have 30 days to meet again, to reduce the budget. And then the towns will have X number of days to call a town meeting for the purposes of taking another vote on the budget.
Well, no, what the exact task is, we have to convene as a committee. Do we have to then make a decision to reduce or any other options? But if we don't do it, we have to reduce? Is that?
No, you don't have.
What are the options?
It says to reconsider.
Reconsider, okay.
Reconsider. You can remember, remember, we reduced and we reduced, and then the last time, we had the town, the third round of town meetings, we said, no, we're done.
Right.
And then the commissioner came in, so.
So to reconsider?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, one of Steve's points at the last one, I think, was, yes, this committee's doing good work with the school committee, but all of these schools are all.
No.
We can vote to move the structure, which, in a way.
But the town has to vote it.
Right. Which, in a way, you know, again, I'm not saying that I shouldn't, we got the task force doing its thing, and I hope that we move this thing forward with the grant money and all that, because, you know, sometimes we, sometimes when we come in the ninth inning on, you know, two outs, you know, and one strike, you know, a decision sometimes might have to be made, you know?
And that was a very good meeting.
Absolutely, it was a great meeting.
I thought very, very good. I think we did a sense of what a lot of the angst was, and I spoke with Steve later, and I was really impressed with what he did, and we had a number of people in the crowd, and they all were spinning a positive stem. I mean, they had their questions, they had their concerns, but nobody was saying, oh, you people are nuts. I mean, they were, they were looking for answers, but they seemed to be very supportive of the approach.
And receptive.
And I think that, well, I know it's small, continue, but I thought that was.
I will tell you that I think Hardwick is absolutely married to this school. And I don't see any, any, like, crack in that dyke. I don't know, maybe you hear different things.
If the Selectmen had it their way.
Oh, we know that. They'd be measuring the drapes.
And I thought they were nuts.
Yeah, yeah. But would you agree that, I think they'd turn out at the town meeting not to close the school. I could be wrong. I could be wrong. Whether they want to pay the bill is another question.
Right. Again, it's about education and.
Fuck every day.
Okay. Budget, stay tuned, and then we'll, Central Office.
Nothing specific, Central Office, but let me talk solar, it's kind of an offshoot. A couple things to update you. Cheryl had forwarded me an email that was sent to the lines from, if you remember the name, Nexam, a company who had a glass of spray for quite a while. Apparently, they're looking at a couple of solar fields from Grand Tree, I believe, in Brooklyn. And so this gentleman sent us something that said, let me read you this part of it, that, let's see, the Nexam, who already entered into a solar and then made a agreement in 2013, which was eventually terminated due to extenuating circumstances. They put it in, so anyway, I made a unilateral decision. You all can change it if you want, but I said that Cheryl will send it back and say we're not interested. And as you all think differently, we can take a different approach, but I guess.
I don't think it would be welcomed by the God as a leader.
Well, you know, my personal approach is, you know, you have to put that in sometimes, if something screws, if somebody screws me in a contract, I'm not contracting with them again. That's just my opinion with these people. It was bad enough that they, I can understand, there are extenuating circumstances at times, but to not keep us informed.
Correct.
And to wait until somebody, you know, one of us sort of found and said, oh, wait a minute, it seems like you're not even building here, to me, is unconscionable. You know, it set us back a year to a year and a half. I would not vote to leave these people in a contract.
I don't see any objection here.
That was the first, and let me tie that in. So then, around the same day, in fact, Maureen and I chatted, and she had met with, her wizards had met with a company that provides, is not on any side, but provides.
They're a nonprofit, working with nonprofits.
Nonprofits, yes. Who will come in and sit and talk to you about all sorts of solar, different approaches to take, what effects they may have, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so she thought it was a good idea, maybe to reach out to them. Unfortunately, they couldn't make this meeting, but they could make just as.
June 9th.
June 9th meeting. So we will invite them in and, you know, hopefully pepper them with some questions as to say, okay, you know, here's where we're at, here's what we have, what's going on down the road. And I think my key thing is, and unfortunately Charlie's not here, did you give him the name of?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
I don't know if he spoke with the individuals regarding the carport type situation in Worcester. My thought is, one-third of our electricity now is being handled under our contract. If we went out again and said, okay, not to Nexam, but to somebody similar and said, yeah, we could get another third, taking up two-thirds of that, to me, that almost kind of wipes out our approach if we wanted to do the carport, carport approach. Because then it just wouldn't be feasible to just try and get one-third more if that's the case. So my thought is, hopefully, we can bring these people in next month, talk to them about the carport, carport approach.
Yep.
And see if maybe the time would be to strike on that, if we can get the, you know, the bulk of almost two-thirds of that utilized in the carport, or carport, but let's look at it, see what you do there, and maybe decide, you know, hopefully, that if we want to go forward, then let's go forward. If these people come in and for whatever reasons, it does not sound like a good idea, and maybe we start to go out for another third of a chunk here. But I think based upon our finances, obviously, you know, we would be remiss not to, not to rescind these situations.
Good.
Do you have any idea how many megawatts that could regenerate in the car, cotton, whatever you want to call it?
I, no, I don't, I really don't remember that at all. I thought they said we could handle the rest of what we want. They said we could handle even more, maybe, so we told them under contract. That was my recollection. Charlie, do you remember it?
I think I remember the same way you do, that we could handle the rest of it here and actually sell it back to the grid.
Yeah. Sell it back to the grid. All right, so we'll stay tuned on that. Let's quit. Click the bargaining, nothing at this time. Elementary, okay. Plan facilities, Ned?
Yes, sir.
Policy review, October?
October.
Special education?
The next week or two.
Okay. Task force?
Everyone was there the last week.
Okay. Okay, we're good on that.
I think the one thing that we, that's still a concern is the Collins Institute, if they'll be able to handle the scope of our request in the time that.
They indicate that they are excited and enthusiastic and now have the $70,000, and the Department of Revenue came across with all of the money. Quavon is not putting any money in, so we're very happy about that.
The Department of Revenue came through, wow.
Yeah. We're very happy about that. And so Monica and her group are feeling, you know, they feel that now that they can spread out and get the capacity to do the work.
Good. Dr. Allen?
Yeah, something that came up at that meeting, and I think is so important, I want to mention it again, is this idea of, we don't have kids from the various kinds of provinces. And I talked to Steve a little bit before our meeting. At that meeting, Dave was like, so what we ought to just call it North Quavon Elementary and Southern. Okay, it was lit. I knew it was that part of the table somewhere. One of the good people.
Oh.
Outside of the table. But I wondered if we kind of mitigate towns, say, North Quavon Elementary School, Wuggles Lane, South Quavon Elementary School, Deacon Allen, something like that.
Deacon Allen.
Some other street.
Gotcha.
I believe.
That'd be south.
Yeah. So I don't know where we go with this. As a committee, we say, yay, barely, we all vote, but it's something that we can do, I believe, and I'd like your input on this, but to get things rolling on there.
Well, I agree. I think it's a good idea to centralize the district. I think it should all be one district.
Absolutely.
The Selectmen from Hubbardson and, I guess, last night, Danielon, he went as far as to suggest perhaps we should look at borderless enrollment. I think that's a good idea as well.
Yeah, great idea.
To the next level, it's just the way we do the middle high school.
And I know you did the mapping piece with the bus thing, thing like that. And I know that you, I don't know if you had any involvement on that piece, but we should get that, we need that, we need that map, too. Dr. March, we need that map. Remember that map, that?
Yeah.
That, the little, that was the transportation map, right?
No, that was Steve's.
Was that strictly enrollment, or was?
I'll send a link out to everyone. It's an online, it's a Google map.
It's a Google map, gotcha.
But I'll send a link out.
Maybe still follow up, and maybe you could time this summer or whatever as a follow-up, because we were looking, it was a great thing, if you haven't seen it yet, that you're showing where the population kind of fit where our students are, where you would say, okay, it's almost like there was a north-south kind of look. So it wasn't like an east-west, or how you would, it was almost, almost. So you're right, a borderless piece, that's absolutely right. Technology, nothing at this time. Unfinished business. School committee concerns, Washington trip.
We have, we'll be brief, we have a few pictures and apropos of discussions regarding teachers and staff. We are submitting, instead of the kids, which we almost always do, a few pictures of the staff that live on the trip. I know Evan brought it up last month, but I just want to say once again, I don't, I don't know what happens when our kids get to the eighth grade, but they seem to be the best kids in the world every year. And you've been, you know, the same amount as I have, and Evan, maybe you've been longer, I'm not sure, but every year, I think to myself, we cannot have better kids the next year. And I'm waiting for the downfall, I'm waiting for that horrible bus that's going to be the worst year in the world. And it never happens to get better and better. Now, what happens the next four years, you know, to become teenagers?
Yeah, you have to say that.
Well, I like this luck, you know, to become teenagers, and, you know, to me, that's on the powers.
What's a bum drop.
But to that eighth-grade level, I'm telling you, these are just tremendous kids. I, you know, if we could freeze them, in a way, and just leave them there, I think that would be great. So a couple of these pictures of mine, I didn't have a lot, but, and then Dave has the rest, so I can speak to mine. But I will tell you that it was very ambitious this year, we had a lot of traveling. Now, this is one of the night walks, so you need to appreciate this. Our bus, this is our bus, and we had the greenish-yellowish, what do you call those?
Blow sticks.
Those blow sticks. And so these are our kids, we're at the Lincoln Memorial and looking, looking down towards, obviously, the Washington Memorial. Now, these are our kids, you have the picture around us, probably another 500 to 600 kids, all in their own colors, our buses, other buses.
Wow.
And that's, this is what we're dealing with, and it gets darker at night. This is not even the dark part at night, but you're in an area spread out, and so this is how you have to ride herd on your kids for, for the night walks. That's my favorite.
Oh, the beardless.
And this is, well, the beard is gone, but you have to notice the ears. The ear is right above, and of course, we were at, we were at the Natural History Museum that day, and also the National History Museum. And Mr. Bemmerger, he actually came out with very little compared to what a lot of the kids were wearing at that, at that time. There were squid heads, there were fish heads. There were a lot of stuff, so he was quite conservative, I want to say, in your.
That's about as far as it-
In your car, right, yeah.
That's our bus driver, Bob.
And this was, and, these are my kids, this is my group, and we are in the National Museum of Art, and this is down along the mall across, almost from the Archives. And I just started going to this place a year ago for the first time. It's two huge buildings, but the, but the west end is where we have all kinds of art, American artists, European artists, and there are, there are some, I mean, there are paintings that are worth millions and millions of dollars. And this is kind of the, the rotunda area where we had the kids meet, they went, they went up on their own. And we're already into the afternoon portion, so we're done quite a bit with the museum that morning, so that was two, two and a half hours of walking up and down five flights of stairs. We went out to, to lunch at this place that had a, a great, we discovered last year, a great lunch place that was reasonable and they had a lot of choices for the kids, so it was a good place for them to eat. And so now we're gathering to make our next move out, which I think might have been the Natural History Museum, or I'm not sure, or the Archives, someplace in there. So this is my group of kids. And this is, this is kind of the rest, everybody's sort of, "Okay, let's wait for everybody," and we are a little tired right now, so there are three of our teachers right, right there in the middle, there's Becca and there's Jordan. And so that, this was kind of my bus.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
This is, this is my group, Lee and I were on the same bus, and this is at the Native Indian Museum. It was the first afternoon we were there, we arrived at the mall, saw the, the air and space, and then we moved to the American Indian Museum, and we were preparing to cross the mall, get the buses and go to the White House, and then go to supper, and then go to our rooms. And this is, that's not my picture, this is, I, I, the high school principal-
That's the grand food pie?
I, I got that picture, our fearless leader, after playing breakfast. And this is, I got this a little-
Those, those, you go back to the beds and you, then you come to this picture, those beds were in honor of Mr. Hall, Mr. Hall was on my bus, so if you notice, it's a silver mustache on the beds and the hall is on our bus for those.
Ah.
See, they're in honor of Mr. Hall.
In this picture, Mrs. Gardner is trying to protect Mr. Hall's comb over. And this was, this was where then we took the groom picture, all the kids in front of the Capitol, and this was, it was a very windy day. So they-
You guys are groomed.
I took this picture, this is a, what a, what a spot this is, this is the observation deck at the museum, and the museum is on Ninth and Pennsylvania Ave, so this is the view, right, that's right down Pennsylvania Ave. And the kids are looking to their left, they're looking across at the Natural History Museum, I'm sorry, the National, the Art, the Art Museum that Lee talked about. It's all right there, and it's just an absolutely gorgeous thing.
And, and prior to, to the museum being built at that spot a hundred years ago, however long it was, was a hotel, I believe, where John Wilkes Booth stayed the night before his assassination, Lakeview, or something like that, before the theaters, before, to be down to the left, a few blocks after.
And if you notice, can you hear that, Charlie? The Capitol, the scaffolding is about halfway gone, and, and the dome is absolutely pristine, the hive is exposed, it's absolutely beautiful. There were, there were thirteen hundred cracks in that dome, and it's cast iron, and it was there since the Civil War. Now, that, that spot was vacant when Lincoln was inaugurated, and he insisted that during the Civil War that they complete that dome. And so it had been there for a hundred and fifty years, they, so it lasted that long, they were fixing it, thirteen hundred cracks.
You can keep going, sir.
This was at the American History Museum, I got this, I'm, I'm, a man on the mission. Where's his ears?
Imagine if he, if he kept the beard?
Are you concerned about security?
Yeah, I am.
Could I have, I have the map if you want to see it?
Yes, that'd be great. That's it, on the pictures, thank you, thank you. That's great, I appreciate it. She's gonna send us this, but just wanted to quickly show you the map Steve put together.
It's good like that, 'cause then you can see where it is.
Yeah. Red Baron?
Go ahead, go ahead, Steve.
Red Baron. Well, yeah, it's, it's, really, it's just a town outline with all the dots, but you can, you can see it's split up by town, each dog, and each student from that town's on a call. But it really gives a good outline of where, you know, how the district lays, and the schoolhouses are the, the location of each elementary school. And then the, the one in the middle was a little different than the middle high school, which is, it's right at that southern end.
Well, northern part of, northern part of Quavon's Lane.
Yeah, but most of, most of Hardwick is closer to another school.
I don't realize that, because you see the-
Right.
Yeah, Hardwick's almost, it's the southernmost number of towns.
Just amazing, Mr. Allen. So we got that link sent to us too, so thank you. Thank you. So, are you going again next year?
I am.
You are? Lee, you're going?
I never come in till like Christmas, Thanksgiving.
Tex, is it true that I heard this year you're going next year?
I'm going with her.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask, Tex?
I'm not gonna be perfect.
Now, Mr. Wigler, how about you?
No, one, one quick, one quick, one quick story, my group of boys, they're in room and Lee's in my room, we've been together for twelve years, and so the boys are in the room, they're, my, my boys are in the room next to us, and they were rocking and rolling the first night, but it wasn't anything major. So I called, I said, "Go knock on the door," and they were, they were very, they were the best group of boys, and they were polite, and they were respectful, so I could have them to open the door. And I said to them, "You know, Mr. Elena and I, our heads are about six inches from the doors, and we can hear everything they're saying in here." And he said, whatever, said, "Oh, my God, please don't tell my father." I don't know what they were talking about, but they were so cute, and, and everything stopped, I think it was, I kept, I told them, "This was the best."
Right.
No, that's what they both like to do.
The only, the only time we ran out, or actually Dave ran out, is, was about, well, it wasn't quite midnight, we were chatting, it was eleven thirty quarter, it's loud, we kinda, lights are on now, we, you're pretty much asleep for the two minutes, and suddenly, I mean, I kind of heard somebody down the corridor, and my, my brain sort of said, "Yeah, maybe somebody's out there, but what the heck, why should I wake up?" But Dave was out of bed right away, he goes out the door, and it was Mr. Castriotta-
Castriotta. You got him?
Because he had to get water or something.
No, he was, he, he was running to take care of someone who was sick, one of the girls who was sick, because he didn't want Lolly Whitehead to be awake. So she called him, he needed, she needed water, he asked her to go call Maureen, and he ran down the hall, and Lolly caught him coming back.
Oh, right. And she, because she is so, I mean, she's up early in the morning getting meds, she's, she, you know, sets herself up late at night for the kids to get meds, oh, that's if they're not sick, and if they're sick, she, she has a few of them, so we kind of try and minimize whatever. We had a couple sick kids, and actually she stayed with the group, and, and Mark Castriotta went back to the four-H Center.
She had another group, wait, her, not Quavon, but like some Kmart, and, and, so she, she was asleep.
She works, is Nikki?
I just wanted to say, not just as two of us, but all of this, we get a good time together. I don't think people realize that sometimes kids, parents, go within children's expectations, perhaps a bit, but I don't think anyone has ever been, or anybody, has been able to keep, they, they give up themselves, they give up themselves, really, for twenty-four hours a day to those four days that they're there. And I think we've had to, we've given several times, we've given up, and I don't think it's just enough, or else, team goes, you can't do it, and you need to do it as long as you can, and it's a price.
What is the price now, so?
Six hundred? Six hundred. We do a lot of planning, we're struggling to get a lot of information, so I need, you know, we have to start, try to call, to start off, call the seventh grade, getting it all up, try to build it up, to set a candidate for, bookkeeping is extraordinary, teachers, all of that, bookkeeping, and all, we're struggling, it really is quite a tough task to try to keep it going, and that's a big challenge for, for us, so.
Great, thank you.
From the bus twice, we'll look at these days.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We get, we unpack, and we get an app, and it seems like, well, they were back there in the summer, or perhaps twelve, thirteen hours.
A day.
We also manage the shooting, the first time, we have, we have to make some decisions, we need to, normally they need to make a decision whether they're participating or going to be considered for the charter.
Right.
And Quavon's been through years, we know a lot, but we have teachers who are not ready now, so we're watching them personally, and we want Quavon to consider, she's been working, we have a flight, and that's the trip I, and she's, she's been in the camp this year, so we are working to make sure that the kids are doing it.
Excellent. Great, that's it. I did skip one thing, public comment, I see someone here, I wasn't sure, anything? Okay, just wanna, just welcome, I'm just saying, I wanna make sure I didn't exclude anybody, so I wanna make sure. Is there a motion, oh, Steve?
So I have one more thing. As Dr. Marshall mentioned, we had a meeting in Okam about the budget, not, it wasn't